I'd like to call on tonight's planning board meeting for the town of Pompey to order December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm Sue Smith, chairperson for the planning board. And my far right is John Shaheen and Kevin Forson, Board Secretary Sarah La Judas. To my left, Dan Bargavus, Carl Ferencrude, Deb Cook, and Roy Smith. Town engineer John Dunkle, and our attorney is Jamie Suckman. Again, welcome everybody. If we could please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, to its stance, to the foundation, to God, in the physical, with liberty and justice.
That was your Canadian comment. Last month, we had. Excuse me, Tim Zerizol around the corner? He used to be.
Back there.
The back. Okay.
That was not using.
Yeah, now we're good. Last month, we had no formal agenda, but our planning board. Didn't meet, and basically we hadn't had anything for three months. I briefly reconvened to introduce our new secretary. And it's all been reminders. And from those minutes, I had a couple revisions that I submitted. To Sarah, basically just cleaning up language. And. From that. Also. A summary of a discussion that the town board today has. For our input on the proposed town code undersizing having to do with home occupations. And we've drafted up a letter, and that will be. Put on for approval tonight, that we may forward it to town board for consideration. So anybody have anything else to add, either to that letter or to the minutes? Any none? I make motion who has presented. Your second, okay? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got several items on tonight's agenda. The first one is the Hutton Strozick West subdivision. It is a preliminary review of an application for subdivision of land located at twenty-six, twenty-eight Pompey Hollow Road. Tax map number zero-two-five dot dash zero-three dash zero-eight dot three. Any of the representatives here? Nobody here for Strotonhold? Yeah, try that again. Hutton Strozick. Like once going twice.
So.
Okay, nobody's here to discuss it. We'll say. Was there any larger maps besides?
Yeah.
Okay.
Back here.
There's a stack one there. Board members, before you leave, please grab. A copy from John, so that you can look that over. Contact them for next meeting.
Okay.
Please. For everybody else, Tim Barrop, our code enforcement officers. Some other town personnel, but I don't know, say Diana Hyrumayes, so. Okay, then we're going to move on to the next one on the agenda, Tomlin subdivision applicants are Kevin and Maria Stimson. Is preliminary review and listed also in the public. Hearing for application for subdivision of land located eight hundred and fifty-one Pompey Center Road. Tax map number zero-three-one dot dash zero-two dash thirteen dot one. I am going to. Say on this that there was an administrative. Oversight, I guess, that the public hearing also got advertised, and then they did sign out their certified notifications. Normally, we do the preliminary review in one month, and then the next month would be public hearing. And who's here on their behalf? Okay. We'll go through the preliminary review, and then I can open the public hearing, and. We can start the process and see where we're at from there. Okay, so if you line up.
Sure.
State your name.
I'm Josh Werbeck. I'm an attorney at Buske Holstein in Syracuse. It's one-ten West Bad Street, Syracuse, New York.
I saw your last name.
W E R B E C K. It's Buske Holstein, B O S U. That's gonna start it, but you go. Anyway, this is a simple subdivision. Marie Stimson, Kevin Stimson, and my clients are here. They're contract benders with a. Part of an existing lot under contract to purchase from Robin Tomlin. Miss Tomlin's here as well. The existing lot is about eighty-three acres, and we're asking to divide it into two new lots, one forty-six. Twenty-two-nine plus or minus, and one thirty-six point seven-one plus or minus. But the division line would be from east to west or from west to east. And my class had purchased or contracted to purchase the Norlilly. They're purchasing a lot to build a civil family residence there at some point.
We have more large maps of this town also? Maybe posting that on the. Afford. Location-wise, one. Order of what? Could be, is on the. Order's saying this. Not need to be referred to. This, this. And. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're looking at on lot one is a pre-existing lot. That is in existence.
That's right. There's just one single lot that we're providing. One single existing lot.
Right. And. Let's play a clarification based on the map. Title, the same lot two A and two B of the Tomlin subdivision amended.
That's because we've changed the map.
Right, and.
Prior to.
It was.
Buying.
Lot two is now two A and two B. Am I correct there?
No, I think we've just modified the division line slightly to add a little bit or to subtract a little bit of acreage from our first map of two A.
But going back to the original subdivision.
Sorry, I'm not following.
Okay. Where the house, where the house and the barn is originally is labeled as lot one.
Okay.
Okay, so was that subdivided off from the farm?
Yeah, I did that. Ten-plus years ago.
Okay, so. What, what you're proposing lot two A and two B formally was just lot two?
Correct, the whole big.
Yes.
Land.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Oh, yeah, down here, there wasn't, there's a lot that's subdivided out a decade ago. Yeah.
Okay, so. For board members, lot number one, parcel number actually ends in thirteen point five. So just trying to clarify. That up. So that's already been subdivided. You're not looking at what's labeled as there at lot one. We're concerned of what's labeled lot two and two, or two A and two B. Which I do have. Question, I know. There's two spots where it says approximate seal proposed drive. All foot from those edge. Has that been approved by the county?
It's not an approval. We've had informal conversations with the county about that line. We will comply with whatever the code requires for that. The subdeast. Surveyor believes that those sightlines meet all requirements, but they still need to be approved officially through the county.
We did have.
Did you get it back or any else?
Yeah, I do have an email from. From the county, from Alvin Chen, who's a. That's one of the civil engineers through the county. That's right here. I can read aloud or provide it to you, whatever you'd like. Yeah. Says, Dear Mr. Simpson, after review of the submitted site distance information, the Tomlin subdivision amended final plan. Dated eleven-seven, twenty-twenty-two. And the County Department of Transportation has determined that the location you requested existed field driveway at proposal lot two A on Pompey Center Road meets our site distance requirements. For fifty-five mile per hour speed limit, and he also said the same exact thing for lot, lot two B. As please note, this email is not a permit owner applicant at time of reclassification. Change of use to residential or anything else, because right now their field drives must still complete an access permit application.
This office. Okay, so both those locations are current. Your quote farm driveways.
Correct. Yeah, when I spoke with Alvin, he said they were permitted. Decades ago.
We could have a copy of that.
Sure. Put it here right now.
Paperwork that we got was not signed. I have been. Ended. We've signed. Patient forms by landowner and applicants.
The dotted line, the line?
The dotted line, it comes off the hanger?
Not dotted in mine, but I think we have the same lines. This is right here.
Yeah.
Solid lined with the meets and bounds on it.
What was the dotted line?
I think it's a farm line.
That's a little lot.
Okay, okay.
As you can see, both lot two A and two B have been labeled that they're. As they would stand, it's currently not a residential building lot.
You don't want to. Correct.
Taking note on the. Lower right or southeast corner, there is. Small stream that goes through there, and there are. Wetlands, wetlands are delineated. On that lot.
But this line change doesn't impact those.
Any questions on the board? Foundation, you have any notes?
Also noted in the environmental review that it's a potentially archaeological sensitive area. Again, you're just doing a subdivision here, so when, when and if they go to actually do a site plan to build on it, that's when the archaeological.
It kicks in.
It can, right? We're just noting that for seeker that there are wetlands, there are. The stream, and it is an archaeological.
You have. You know, so now I think everything's.
Thank you.
So at this point. Again, it's fairly straightforward. Subdivision of the map appears to be any. In order. Before we open the public hearing. I am going to do the seeker assessment. Which it's a series of eleven questions that we as a board have to answer. The answers, there's only two answers. One would be small. No, or small impact maker, or the option, or option is moderate to large impact may occur. Based on information that we have in our application packet that we have, and what applicant in honor has presented and. Other information this evening, I will go through them. Board will discuss, and then based on the discussion, what the answer would be.
I have one question for that.
Yep.
Is there a letter of intent or something for the sale?
There's a contract to purchase. There is.
Okay.
Yep.
So there is a.
All right, number one, will a proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use, planning, designing regulation? No. It's harm zone and just being split into two and no current building. I say no or small impact may occur. Number two, will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Again, they're just subdividing it with no intent right now. I say no or small impact maker.
Great.
The three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Again, I say no.
Agreed.
Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No, or small impact.
Great.
Number five, will the proposed action result in adverse to the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No, or small impact. Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Discussion. Will the proposed action impact? A, public or private water supplies, or B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Again, there's no building going on right now. That would be a no. Both accounts.
Yep.
Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, and aesthetic resources? As documented that. That there is potential there, but nothing is being excavated at this point, so I say no or small impact.
Great.
Number nine, will a proposed action revol- result in adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No, or small impact.
Agreed.
Number ten, will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Again, there's, it's just a subdivision at this point. I say no or small impact.
Yeah.
And number eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No, or small impact.
Agreed.
Based on the answers to those eleven questions, I make a motion for negative declaration on the seeker.
I'll second the motion.
And further discussion, motion second. Vote all four.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion has carried. A. So based on this, and we have. Evidence that letters were sent out, certified mail. To property owners here than a thousand feet of this parcel. And make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any chose? Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in public that wishes to speak on this? State name, address, please.
Robin Tomlin. The owner of the land that's to be subdivided. I've had the pleasure and the honor to live in Pompey. It's been wonderful. And I just want to introduce Dr. Simpson and his wife. They're going to be wonderful. You can.
Thank you. I was here. Anybody else have anything? Tim, as codes officer, do you have anything?
I have no concerns.
I guess before we, well, is it Jamie and John or everything in order again? We could, we just did not have to go to county.
That is correct.
Okay, so we can act on this tonight. Okay. If there's no further comment from the public, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Kevin. The discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. So. Any further discussion within the board?
Very simple.
Motion? Anybody willing?
I'll make a motion that we approve the. Tomlin subdivision. Maria Stimson and Kevin Stimson, eighteen fifty-one Pompey Center Road, town Pompey. Tax map map parcel number zero-three-one. Dash zero-two dash one-three dot one. As it is presented on. Map dated eleven oh seven, twenty-twenty-two. By. The DW and. LSPC surveyor.
Motion, I will second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, both. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Robin, I do need to signature.
Okay, you want it now?
Wait, on the. We have the. Further.
You'll need a few of those guys.
The board, the chairman needs to sign.
She took it to sound with an offer to law tonight.
You can do it if you want. Over here. Okay. With this, our next. Agenda item is the mapstone site plan review. Preliminary review of site plans submitted for project located at three-one ninety-one Pompey Center Road. Tax map number zero-one-six dot dash zero-two dash two dot zero. Preliminary review, I know. Certified mail got sent out, but it was not advertised for a public hearing. So again, we've got to figure. Figure that out, probably get around.
But. Well, we're probably not going to decide it tonight anyway, so we're, we're good. We can always. Decide it right after the public hearing next time. We can run through it.
Okay.
Today.
All right.
Including, including seeker?
We don't have to, we'll do that next time.
Okay, okay, right. So tonight is just preliminary, no public hearing. Okay.
With that, I am going to recuse myself from. This section with the mapstones, because we're neighbors and we also do business with Eaton families, so. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to run this portion.
Oh, he's right up. The applicant. Who else would you want to do?
Well, we, we have this. Location up here on the hill that we are hoping to. Rent it out for, to host weddings and, and possible other events.
Just. For my clarification, you went ahead and got it all set up for that and. Had a wedding up there, and.
We had two weddings up there, my son and my daughter.
Yep, which is allowable family members, and I think you're doing an Airbnb in the home?
Yes, currently, yep.
And, and just. For my clarification, why wouldn't you have come here first?
We had to fix the place up. It was a mess, and we were going to do it regardless. And along the way, we just kind of decided this is the direction we're going.
We were going to have our children's weddings or.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's a nice job up there.
It's, you know, it can be used for other things. If you said, no, you can't do this, it can be used for a lot of other things too, but. But that was our main goal, was is to have the. Do children's weddings.
How, how big of a wedding are you? Wedding's very planned. How many people?
Well, the two that we hosted were right around two hundred people. And it was very comfortable.
Is it problem of parking or traffic or anything?
We got, you know, our parking is in a hayfield, and. It's kind of, it's easily expandable or shrinkable if need be.
On my volunteer fireman side of things, that's a bad intersection right there. We've had a number of accidents because it is at the peak of that hill. So during those events. Signage or. Flashing lights or anything? Have you considered any of that?
Well, that being said, we considered that, and so we are steering the traffic away from that peak.
Yep.
To the south, to the far end of the property, where there's a much longer, much larger site distance there.
Good, so you're considering that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's. That point there is terrible.
Anybody else have anything?
Would the events that you're anticipating having, or would they take place on a single day, or would they be multiple day?
They, you know, generally I would say a wedding is a single day, but with the house available there, the house is going to be rented with the wedding site. So the, the bridal party can stay in the house and then have the wedding at the barn out back. But that being said, no, it would most likely be single day events.
Yeah, and it's a good question. I had some nieces and nephews get married recently, and weddings have now become these. Three-day events, you know, dinner Friday night, and then breakfast Saturday morning, and then wedding Saturday afternoon, and then brunch Sunday, just.
Yeah, that's very possible.
Yeah, yeah, just to consider that.
That's kind of what we did. We, we had. The rehearsal dinner, then we had the wedding the next day, and then we had breakfast the next morning, so.
And sanitary facilities?
There are rented, rented bathrooms, you know, will require, because we have no facilities, we have no sewer, you know, public sewer or anything, we. Rent those nicer public restrooms to come in, and they're all self-contained, and. You supply water, and they take everything away.
And primarily for the wedding summertime?
Yes. Without a doubt, because there's.
Is the.
We have no means for, it's not, no, the barn is not heated.
Yep.
And generally, they'd be catered. You're not preparing food.
That's correct. Yep.
Lighting.
Um.
Like in the parking area?
Parking areas so far, we've used solar. Down the road, if, if it becomes more of a permanent thing, we will have permanent lighting installed.
For. For exiting it in the dark.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So what is the rear year-round usage you're expecting?
The year-round usage is simply the, the house being rented. But, you know, in the off-season, it's. Um, but, you know, in the off-season, it's, we can't host events there because we have no heat or. You know, it's not insulated. It's just a summer event. Set up, I guess.
It's like May through September, something like that?
Probably May through October.
Okay.
Although, be a chilly May wedding likely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Risky.
Any long-term, uh, plans on insulating or heating or doing any of that?
Not at this time, but that's certainly something that, I guess, depending on, you know, how much, uh, demand or whatnot, that could happen in the future.
In terms of that drive. Farm drive.
Amy?
Yes.
In, in terms of the driveway they're using, it's just a farm driveway, we wouldn't need any approval for site distance or anything, wouldn't we?
That's totally up to you, and I, I think you do, the, the things that, that jump out at me, and I know that, that John has some notes as well, is, um. You know, the, the safety of the in and out.
Yeah.
For public accommodation, so I think that's going to need to be addressed. Um, what it needs to be, does it need to be paved door? Rebel or whatever, um, the actual parking on the site, um. Should it be designated? I, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen where you're doing.
It should be, like, it, it should be part of the site plan. Um, arrangement so that it's, you know, a safe parking arrangement.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a place of public accommodation. Uh. Also, I don't know where the nearest neighbors are, and that could be a question, and is there going to be any time rotations on noise music or other?
Well, the, the, the nearest neighbors are across the street and I don't know that they've ever come before us, or they're similar. Operation.
They have something similar?
They do music and I think they've even had some weddings up there.
They thought we should come, but anyway, that's.
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, I, I don't think they've ever, yeah, come, come before us, but.
I think they listen to music.
Didn't they?
Yeah, yeah, probably, yes.
But would you be, you know, on the side of plan approval would be restricting hours and.
Um, that's a good.
Yeah.
That's a good question, hours, and are there three driveways or two, there's the house?
There's three, um, existing, because there's a farm driveway right before the house, then there's the house slash barn driveway, and then there's the. Bar and.
For the parking.
For the parking and the farm access driveway, that is.
Yeah.
Are, at a certain level.
For occupancy in that, in that barn, you haven't done any inspections on it in terms of fire inspections or?
No inspections, there should be. A permit for occupancies, so they handle alone. And that the building has been remodeled or. Safe manner. And up to code.
So, Jamie, where in the process would that occur?
About enforcement doing a, an inspection for fire purposes and occupancy purposes? I recommend that it would be a, um, a condition of any site plan approval. And that no certificate of occupancy, you know, can be issued, obviously.
So.
Until that's done.
Yep, can, can I jump in there?
Please do.
They actually do it before then because occupancy will translate into parking spaces.
Yes.
And so we should get those numbers on the final site plan.
Yeah.
So what are the limits of the building, what are the limits of the site, and, and does the parking meet the code? And in order to know that, you have to know the occupancy of the.
Yeah, and, and there's another area that I know we really haven't addressed. In the town is the Airbnb and requirements for. Occupancy, fire code, parking. Et cetera, I don't know where that falls in.
Well, this one just might be a little easier if it is part of the wedding venue.
Right.
And it's just approved as part of this.
But I mean, they're doing it. This time of year.
I know, I'm just saying that it's, it's.
So that inspection would include the house for.
Right.
Those purposes.
Right.
Yeah, bang there and. Uh, and the house is. Fully heated and. Yeah, so.
The house.
The house, yeah, yeah, it's done a nice job up there, I really.
Thank you.
It's very good, it's definitely an improvement.
Kevin?
Yes?
Are Airbnbs allowed in the farm district?
I don't think that it's addressed specifically.
Yeah, I, I don't remember saying anywhere.
But what I said is I think we're, we're off the hook a little bit, just because it's, we're.
Going to prove it as a wedding venue, sure. Sure, so that, that may not. I guess people have to be married that are coming to stay in your Airbnb. Or planning on it.
Getting it, checking it out in the winter for the summer.
Um. Any other questions? So, so code enforcement should do this before the next, uh, pub, the meeting, which would be the public hearing. Okay. So can you get on, on the. List of inspection before the next meeting?
Yeah, we can stop the time and get that done.
Right, you'll get with the applicant.
Yep.
Get that all figured out. Um.
We haven't still made it get this all sorted out, right?
That's right.
Bottom of the bucket, okay.
Yeah, true.
That's a good point. Um, but you know, the discussion going forward to be, you know, the driveway access, making sure we got, you know, site distance is safe and. And the questions I'd be having signage, you know, lighting, exterior lighting, if we're going to have any of that, um. And I just want to make sure it's safe for people getting in and out of the building, the privacy of the house. The road to the.
Yeah.
Parking lot and back out of the road, so.
Yeah, and that would be lighting that would be just used. Temporarily during the events.
Right.
Right, right, at night when people are going home, you're not going to. Park a lot of them for the night, uh. And, and, uh, I guess also code enforcement, you'll look at handicap accessibility and.
All, yeah, during the fire inspection.
You, you'll, you'll address all that, okay. Any other questions up here?
Just another note to, this plan should actually show whatever this revised access is, it should show the dimension, the width, it should show materials. Um, if, and I don't know, and that's a planning board.
You're talking about on the driveways, yes.
And, and also. If the, the designated parking area should be delineated on here, if nothing else, I don't know if it's grass, I don't know if it's gravel.
Yeah, it's, it's grass and it's a.
Hayfield.
Yeah, it's a hayfield and it's a farm, uh. Driveway, I don't know, there's no drainage up there, there's no.
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
And the driveway is gravelled.
Right.
So I could delay, delineate it on the map.
Right, right.
Physically delineated.
That, that's what I meant, yes, on the map, so that.
All three of the driveways should be delineated, are, are, are you using all of them?
Yeah, we use them all for farm access.
Yeah. But, but just because it's going to be a, a wedding venue, I think all the driveway should be identified on the. On the map.
The, the first driveway that I referred to before the house, that. Really has no bearing on the wedding.
Yeah, that's.
Simply just allows us access to the field that's before the house.
But.
It should all be on the, it should be on the site plan because. It's the whole site plan that gets approved and it's, I'm sure it'll go fine, but it's like later for enforcement, if something goes wrong, people start complaining.
Yeah.
We have to have it on.
Um, trying to think of what else, and, and you think. That the DOT should be, uh, we should get a letter from the DOT for site distance?
Yeah, just like these people did, did you hear them?
Yeah, yeah.
And they look at, they look at farm driveways differently than they look at public access.
Yeah.
Likewise, so there's. Different criteria, so yeah, it's going to refer to the county anyway, doesn't it?
Yes.
So, you know.
It's going to be referred to the county when we get the, uh.
Yes, what longer, yeah, yes. Got to go to the county.
I know, yes. I would like to suggest that, uh. On this road to the parking lot, um, be gravelled so that.
It is.
If it's muddy and you're parking in the field, we're not trucking mud out onto the highway.
Yeah.
To have a, a, a solid.
Right, yeah, that, that's already all ground.
Already there.
Yeah.
Jamie, the county already has everything that we have.
Oh, they do, great, yes. But we haven't heard that. Nope, we didn't make last month's meeting, so it'll be on their January, right, agenda, for sure.
Before we meet.
Um, I can tell you when it's going to be. Second.
How many bedrooms is the house?
Five.
So.
Eleven.
Down to four.
At least, e- easily, yeah. Twelve. And second, those kids entered.
Sixteen, sixteen, so yeah, so.
There's at least room for twelve people in the house.
So county meets before we meet. They meet on the eleventh, meet on the sixteenth, so we should be good there.
The last thing, Kevin, we were talking about is that, did we want to talk at all about, um, operation hours or, uh, noise levels or music at certain times or anything like that?
And the music will, everything will be taking place in the barn?
Yeah, as far as. Far as I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In terms of.
At this time, that's, so the two weddings that we had. The music was in the bar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you say that with some.
You know, like maybe someone playing music for the ceremony, but beyond that.
Yeah, outside, if you.
Yeah.
Set, set that up, like the, the. Loud music at weddings, so you can't talk to each other, will be.
In the barn.
In the barn.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but nice harp music on the outside.
Yes, the harp music outside.
When we had our, I think it was my son's wedding.
She's right there, you can book her now, my wife.
Oh, we, we had, uh, my son's wedding and we asked the Smiths who are the. You know, the closest really people to the. Site, and they said they couldn't even hear it, so. I was glad, glad to hear that, so.
Yeah, well, what if, um, and this is up to this board, if, if you want to make it part of the site plan approval, that, you know. Substantial music.
Be confined, confined inside the barn, yeah. So, um. And, and any part of your events that you've had so far moved to the outside, I know there's the guys that go out to, you know, smoke a cigarette or whatever, but there's no, most of the. Events take place in the barn.
Yeah, yeah, the reception was all in the barn, the, the actual ceremony was on the lawn in front of the barn.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, okay. Uh, hours.
Twenty-four.
For the Airbnb, but for the weddings, when?
Uh, the ones we had had edited about ten. Um, I can't foresee anything going past eleven o'clock even, really.
Being that.
You know, have us at hours at this time, I guess, you know, I didn't, we don't really know what your expectations of it would be, but we don't want to hear now.
Yeah.
Music.
Yeah, we want to be respectful.
Yeah.
To the, to the neighbors, so, you know, ten o'clock is pretty reasonable, ten. You could, you could, you know, our next meeting, we plan it.
Yeah, I think.
What we're going to be asking.
Right, from saying specifically ten or eleven at this point, but.
Yeah.
We, we aren't in the, in the business of staying up late, so.
But just, but think about it before the next meeting as to. You know, when you think it's reasonable to end it and. Uh, lighting, we talked about, that should be. The downward facing lights.
Our try compliant.
Right, so you know, you're not seeing them out on the street and right, because you are. Kind of visible up there, and those lights are going to be only used during the operation when people are leaving and, and such. Um, so we'll need some cut sheets for those lights. Okay, and where are they going to be located on the map?
Yep.
Uh, what else do we need on the map? So we need the driveways. Obviously the site itself.
Location of Porta John's, um. Parking, parking, traffic circulation.
But to sequence up events, the first thing will be to have a CO, right, we wouldn't. We want the CO before we have the parking.
Not CO necessarily.
Codes.
The code inspection.
The capacity of the building.
Okay.
That determines how many.
We don't know it.
You don't know it yet.
Right.
That's going to drive the whole maximum number of people allowed at any event and all that.
And since the house is part of the event, that also needs the inspection?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of the site plan at year.
Yeah, okay. What, what is the little barn that was like, it's like a garage, what's that being used for?
Right now, just storage.
Storage, okay, yeah. And the farm barn, the one.
That also storage at the moment, yeah.
Any plans in the future to?
We hope to fix it up, so it's a little nicer looking, but.
Yeah.
Um, no real. You know, plans to incorporate it at this time.
Yeah, right. Um, so the map, the driveways, site.
Parking layout.
Parking layout.
Parking layout for both the house and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the wedding.
For events.
Um. The, the. Traffic in and out, how that's going to work.
Right, including any deliveries that are going to need to be made with larger vehicles, um. Making sure they can get in and out, and fire access during an event. So you want to have the fire department maybe look at the plan to see if something, if they have to get into the. Um, facility when there is an event there, and they get their vehicles in there.
Yeah, I think codes really handles that.
Um, there's. That's a vacation. Around the building.
Yeah, exits and exit markings and all that.
Not, not the building itself, but just getting into the site where it's, when it's fully parked.
Oh, when it's fully parked, yeah, access to the site.
Right.
What we did during the two weddings is we kept the house slash barn driveway open.
Yep.
And the parking was all at, at the far end, so that there was no, there was nothing clogging the driveway, if anybody needed to come in, they could.
Yeah. In the farm driveway that you're not using, that also would be accessible.
That's right.
Fire department had to get in.
Yes, yeah, that's there.
Uh, you've actually made it a lot more accessible now than it has been.
Yeah, you couldn't use, you used to be able to not be able to drive down the driveway without hitting your mirrors and, you know.
Uh, does the board want to see any landscaping is the question?
Um, have most of you been by it?
Oh, yes.
I think the landscaping has certainly improved.
It's good.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I personally, I don't, but.
You don't need any.
Landscaping. Lands.
Yeah, um. Where did you find the globes for those lights?
Uh, my cousin, who's an electrician, found them for me.
Yeah, I never thought you'd be able to find it.
I wondered myself, both of them got broken while we were clearing the.
Yeah.
Lot of tree, came down, hit the first one and smashed it, and then wind blew the second one, knocked it up.
Yeah, so they, they, they look good, so I, um. Don't know of any landscaping that would be.
Just brought it up.
Yeah, I, I don't think. You know, you've done a pretty good job of what it is now, it's not bad to look at as you go by.
Is, um. Is the owner of the property pasture land realty LLC?
Yes, that's, and I, it's a single member LLC, that's me.
Okay.
Is there anything inside the building in terms of layout partitions, rooms and that, that the board would need to see?
Uh, in the wedding building, it's wide open, it's, it's just a cement floor, the. You know, end to end.
The doors are noted, the exits are.
You'll note them on the site plan.
Sure.
Entry and exit.
Right, and code will be looking at those.
Lots of doors.
Yeah.
Large, large doors.
Yes, yeah, farm doors, right.
And the location of the Porta Johns.
Right, which those are, uh, portable.
Right.
So the, so far what we've done is we just had them. Come down the main driveway past the house and they park them right in front of the barns.
On one side of the driveway or the others. Yeah, because they need access to power.
Yes, power and water, yeah.
So whoever that's going to be, just fill that on the plan.
And, no.
Any need for water at the facility?
There's a well that goes with the barn and there's a well that goes with the house. Right now.
And will that be part of the wedding venue, is it, is it needed for the wedding venue in any way?
Just for cleanup and for the Porta Johns. That's what you're, I've, what you're asking. But would that be part of your inspection to, to make sure they have portable water?
Well, you're not, you're not using the, the well in the wedding venue for drinks.
No.
No, you're bringing in.
No, it's, right.
Right, right, okay. But those Porta Johns they're using, I've, um.
They're the.
They're, they're nicer than my bathroom.
Right, right, air conditioning.
But they require power and, and, uh.
It's a waste, it's self-contained.
Yeah, 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 they're pretty, pretty fancy. So you will be. Running the operation of the wedding, you're not gonna just say, okay, Kevin, you want to get married again, it's yours.
Right, no, one of us or some of our family will be overseeing it and um, you know, we'll have requirements as far as, you know, you have to. You know, have a Porta John rented and you have to rent your tables and get a, get a caterer and, you know, we'll kind of oversee the whole thing, but we're not gonna just let them.
Right, and then the, you know, if it ends, if you decide at ten thirty or eleven o'clock it ends, one of you will be there to. I know some of them will be staying in the house.
Right.
But uh, someone will be overseeing.
Yeah, we've got to be there for cleanup and to basically shut the party down.
Yeah. And to keep the keys for those three cars of those individuals that couldn't drive home.
Right, right.
Anything else from the board?
Haven.
Yes.
Uh.
Yeah.
Can't remember the three of them off the top of my head. But does this meet the three criteria for the Ag District?
Which is the ten, ten, ten.
Our business overlay.
Yeah.
We're looking at. You did. I, I got off.
When I went to it.
It does, right, meet the revenue and the.
Yeah.
Requirements, okay. And, and will you continue to uh do any farming on the fields around there or just?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the plan.
Yeah.
Um, that's one of the reasons why I hoping we didn't have to make an actual gravel parking lot, cuz we cut the hay off and, and wear cars there.
Yeah.
Um, but the, the whole farm is, is actively farmed.
A few reason to have to make the parking lot.
I, I would say more important to have a control entrance out though.
Right, right, have a pretty solid entrance to. When it gets muddy, but yeah.
Yeah, we want people to go home, so definitely make sure that it's solid for people to get in and out.
Yeah.
My trust, you know, your soil's up there, so.
Right, we've made sure we parked them on the high ground.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Anything else you can think of?
But just showing that you can park the right number of cars in it wherever you want to park them.
And we're gonna want to see this before the next meeting.
Well, yes.
And the inspection before the next meeting.
Yes, so we can decide if, if uh, if you can work with codes about how many, then you'll be able to. Modify your plan, which would be nice if we could have the final plan. Of course, in advance, and then it'll be the public hearing and maybe it can be done at the next meeting. If, if there's not gonna be time, we'd have the next meeting and then it'd be another meeting.
Hope there's nothing else. We'll get ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you next one. And, and Jamie, you said the letters went out, they just didn't go out in time?
I'm. The letters went out, but we did that facilitate the letters going out, so.
Never got advertised.
It never got advertised, yeah.
So be advertised this time.
Actually, I mean, we can um.
Renotice.
I don't need to renotice it, but we can, we can um. Open the public hearing. Adjourn it and make care of the technical detail of it being published. Does that make sense? Was there, we. So that we can. Open the public hearing.
Tonight?
Tonight. And then we'll adjourn it and it can be continued so that people don't have to be renoticed. But the technical um discrepancy that the publication wasn't done can be correct.
Can be corrected, okay, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a more.
Yeah, motion by John Shaheen, second by Carl Ferrin Group. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh. Motion to.
Let's see if anyone's here.
Oh.
Let's see, cuz there might be.
Yeah, is anyone here to speak? Or against? Matt Stone? Hey.
So it'd be a motion to adjourn. The public hearing extended to the next meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing extended to the next meeting.
So good news. And.
As the sixteenth. January sixteenth.
And that the technical um detail that the notice needs to be published will happen.
Yeah, we'll publish it.
Right now and then. Within the deadline.
Correct.
All right, who, who made the mo, had the motion?
Or you did.
I had the motion, you seconded the motion.
John.
John, okay, John seconded the motion, all in favor?
Yeah.
I, I, so, see you next month.
Can I make one more suggestion?
Yes, absolutely.
All of the operational elements that you guys have talked about, it might be good if the applicants were to put that in writing, hours of operation, things like that, so you have something to actually. Approve as an operation plan, and just tell the story of how you'd want to.
But do you have any questions of us?
Um, no, I don't think so.
And you can always call and, but the codes or.
Right.
Sue, no, you can't talk to Sue, have to, call me.
As a friend and neighbor, you can call me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John, on the property.
Thanks a lot.
Long, long time coming.
Hmm.
Uh, and let the record show that um. Unreached. Okay. So from there, uh, next on our agenda. Is. Um, Seaboard Solar Operations Tier Three Solar Application. Concept Site Plan for Tier Three Solar Project Located on Frank Long Road. Um, it says text number zero, yeah, zero one zero. Uh, there's zero three dash thirty eight dash one. Give him a minute to get things. Hello? Can I just keep having you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying on that as I be. And then I can get it, I make them ask.
So just send that copy. This is new information that we have.
Um.
I think it's.
Best of this already.
This is exactly the same submission that we made. Okay, so I can give you all, most of us have.
Have it, have it.
Really, have it.
Have it.
Yeah, okay.
And like for those.
Yeah.
Also have the presentation in the USB portal, if you guys prefer that, so we can just put it into there. Other industries here.
Yeah.
Yes. They're gonna be building project.
United, United and the.
We have to flash, the flash drive, we'll plug it in, so we can connect that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
If possible, if you know, we have this information here.
Yeah, you try it. Oh. But I didn't know I had it.
Yeah. Got it.
You need to type that.
So you have to.
No.
Yeah.
Good, when they're doing that, introduce yourselves.
So hello, everybody, uh, Mike Chandler, Seaboard Solar, uh, I'm joined by Pedro Rodriguez from Seaboard Solar, this is Ryan Clark from Seaboard Solar, and this is Mike Anterline from Windmill Engineering. Out of Buffalo, I believe, Rochester, Rochester, they're all over the place. Um, so Seaboard Solar, we are out of Connecticut, we are a more or less what I like to call a mom and pop operation, we've ten to fifteen employees. Relatively small, and uh, we have a portfolio that boasts what you like to compare to much any large corporate entity that does this sort of thing, so. That's just a little bit about us, uh, we are here for a solar, a proposed solar project at seven thousand Frank Long Road uh here in Pompey. It would be located on a subdivided plot of land that would equal. Just shy of seventy eight, seventy acres, sixty and a half, I believe, would be the final sub, subdivision. And the. Tier three system would be five megawatts and it would sit on about, I want to say forty-four percent lot coverage of, of the parcel itself, so that would be about thirty acres. Um, Adrian is here with me to get into specifics about the project itself, as well as Mike from, from, excuse me, oh, from, I don't think calling a mic on it. Um, so we're here for the board's acceptance of the application, ultimately the referral to the town board as we understand the process works and answering any preliminary questions or. Just go from there.
And our, in terms of concept, site point that we're charged with is to go through. And initial review of it, does it meet our town law Tier Three Solar? There's a couple trends on this, just looking at the map for reference, that the road you see is Long Road. Um. This project would be a little bit different in that there would be a contingency on it of if the solar is approved. Um, they have contract, I believe, with landlords that they would be taking. Pieces off of three parcels and creating one new parcel. From.
And, and how does the timing work on that? Jamie, do you know?
I'm.
I'm a good, because they're, they're gonna take pieces from three different parcels, make it into one where the solar array will be. Do they have to do that first to get approval first?
It's all gonna be part of the. It's kind of all happened at the same time, so it's like, no, you get site plan approval, subject to finishing the subdivision, you get the subdivision subject, it all happens on the same day.
Okay. Now, with the first that we have done, we just finished up a solar project in Evans, we also have to put the property into the overlay, subdividing a portion from an existing property, was the same process. So we basically, we're going back to the town board, and it's all about, and we came back to the plan with the site plan approval and subdivision approval.
Right, Jamie, they're gonna bring us like three separate parcels or some number and we're going to turn that into one parcel.
Correct.
And that's gonna stay with us.
Correct.
And I think it's, I think it might show on the maps already.
Yeah.
Yeah, it shows on the maps also, that's gonna be.
Isolation of uh.
Yeah.
Just going through.
No.
This is initial, we're not making any decisions.
Just talking.
Right, we're asking questions, so to absorb everything.
Yeah, cuz I know we submitted a lot of information, but you know, wanted to give it like a full on. Application, similar as we were going back, I like subdivision plans, stormwater. Um, visual, so if you guys have any comments, well.
So let's just something.
Continue with your presentation.
Sure, um, so like Mike Sam Pedro Rodriguez from Seaboard Solar, I just wanted to give you guys, let you guys know Bennett Ramsey is this project manager of this project, he. Had a little car situation on the way here, um, I'm the management of Seaboard's development and real estate equity, so I'm very familiar with the project. Someone's gonna give you the entire information, but in the next meeting, you will see a different face, I just don't want you guys.
Yeah, I saw him on the application.
Yeah, second, he's been the one that, point of contact, so.
Right, okay.
Adrian, excuse me, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, sorry. Um, so we contacted George and Nate a little over a year ago, and we approached him because. We noticed that the subdivision in town and the feeder there is located right in front of the property. Uh, space for what it is, a one solar project, which is about five megawatt AC. Um, using any other solar project that we do, the first thing that we do is just make sure that we have interconnection of the project, so we submitted the application to National Grid and we went through the entire interconnection process. At this point, we have interconnection approval, eighty twenty-five percent payment of the upgrade cost, and we have an interconnection agreement as well. All said, we national grid.
You just, one quick question on that site selection, you, you say in your application that you looked at other locations in Pompey?
Yes.
And this was the, the best, but was there a secondary one if you?
There were multiple, there were multiple.
That would work?
Yeah, there were multiple location that we'll look at, I don't think that they will work per se. One will be because of the wetlands located on the property.
Yep.
Also is the location of the parcel itself, so George and Anita own about the three parts that we are. Subdivided from is about like two hundred and thirty-six acres.
Yeah.
And a large chunk of their property is actively farmed, so we wanted to locate the property, the project in an area that it was like top ten, that in an area that they're not using, and there's also no. Um, hindering the current farmland, there were not a lot of parcels that meet those requirements in Pompey, so we just stay away from there.
So most of that is wooded now that.
Yeah, all of this. Most of these areas can have been wooded, um, basically exist in tree line.
Yeah.
That we're gonna remain, but you can see we're gonna keep that, take natural buffer.
Yeah, so you're not impacting any existing farming operation?
No.
Okay.
Exactly, if you look at this, it's like less than like three acres in this little square that we utilized. Um, and aside from that, we added some um, less landscaping.
Hmm.
But.
I will interject point of clarification that it, the difference or, don't be confused between active farmland and woodland. It's the farmland soils.
Right.
It's what we are.
Yes, and.
Found by.
Yeah, so aside from that, like any other solar project that you're proposing in agricultural farmland, so we're ready to submit our notice of intent to NYSERDA and the AG markets. We got the okay from NYSERDA, and now um, the AG market is reviewing the project, they usually take about thirty to forty-five days to give their determination, so that's where we are right now. We're ready to have a conversation with them, they were no, didn't raise any red flags, we have gone through the same process for multiple for projects, so we're comfortable that is.
Yeah, and, and Sue, I, I agree with you on the definition, but if it's not. Actively being farmed and it's wooded, that makes a distinction for, I think for me and for a lot, that it's not where it's not taking a cornfield.
Right.
And make it into a solar.
But exactly, but as, aside from that, like the process, because we have done this in other projects in this state, when you go to the AG market, it's not so much about. Impacting the property itself, but also the vicinity of it, so is the project, the disturbance that you're doing, is impacting the property, any vicinity farms, any soils, they look at the commissioning plan, the stormwater. The equipment that we're using, so we've got to vary.
Plus, you said you're gonna plant uh for pollinators, they'll need them on the farm.
Yeah, it's standard with our projects, every area that we disturb with hydro-sieve with pollinators.
Yeah.
Makes, uh, we only fans the area around the rest or everything else will remain as it is right now. Um, we're buying about seventy acres, we're disturbing, I think it's a little shy of thirty. So the rest of the property, which is basically. Something like this. Will remain on the store the way it is right now. Um, also, it took us a little while to get to this point because. Uh, waiting for National Grid to give us interconnection approval, we went through the entire surveying process, topo, boundary, wetlands and major species. During that process, we realized that most of the town of Pompey is within the jurisdiction of the Onondaga Nation.
Hmm.
Which trigger an archaeological survey on the property, so we did that already, it took us about four months to do the entire survey. As soon as we got the letter from Shippo, myself and Kevin was the project manager at that time, we met with the Onondaga Nation on site, we walked the property. We basically got their okay to continue working on the project, they're recommending an archaeological survey, because they only work with like two. So we used them um, and coordinated with them the testing on the property, we basically set up a grid in the entire. Disturbed area, it's six inches hole in the entire area, and there's always an agent from the Onondaga Nation to make sure that nothing. Uh, is found or triggered. There were two small locations, one here and another one here, where nothing of like high sensitive area was found, but I think some arrowheads. And we just decided to redesign the solar array in the Onondaga Nation, those that we have about two, twenty-five feet above her. So that's um, what we. And what we did so, after we got the redesign of the project, we sent it back to the Onondaga Nation, got their review and approval. Submitted our notice of intent with Shippo, we got the determination of no effect. So after that happened about a month and a half ago.
Hmm.
After we know that we have a real project, we should agree from Shippo, from the AG markets, and that we also discipline meets the letter of the law. Now we're here, um, with the planning, we'll just start the process.
I did see you found some junk that my ancestors left.
I didn't notice that.
Yeah, the Budweiser cans.
Yeah.
You'll be sorry.
So, um. That's all we're here for, I just wanted to give you a short presentation, I know that um, we gave you a lot of information, um. Bill is here for when I can give you some small uh presentation on the engineering, but we just want to open up with questions or anything that you.
I, I have some very general questions, one, you're a little small operation in Connecticut, so are you, do you use local uh contractors?
Yes, to um expand it a little bit on that, so we're, yeah, we want to keep it small, because that gives us control on what we do every single project, that being said. Since we're for over a decade, I develop over three hundred megawatts, right now we have a portfolio of a little over a hundred megawatts in New York that are permanent, we're about to start construction. Um, we come from a real estate development background, that's why we own the property, and we like to buy oversized land because it gives us control what to do with it.
Hmm.
So for example, we're proposing landscaping over here, but one of the neighbors wants to have more landscape, we can do that, we have worked with us on doing conservation easement, putting properties land trust. Um, which.
But you'll use local contractors?
Yes, work, yeah, so what we do when we do the construction, because we're handling so many processes at the same time. We contract an EPC company, engineering procurement.
Hmm.
Better, that basically handles all the construction design, uh, all that stuff, and then they use local contractor. And then same thing when we do professional maintenance contracts, they stop contract out with local people, so cuz they're already here.
It's more cost effective and it's better for the locals.
Yeah, and, and my other question is the arrays that you're proposing are made in China.
The panels?
The panels.
Uh, no, so right now.
So in your application, they're from a Chinese, they're from China.
One, one, the especially that we submitted right now is for China, because that's really what is available right now, where we. One, one, the especially that we submitted right now is for China because that's really what is available right now. What we are. Building projects, we brought those panels about a year ago and we had it in a warehouse. Those were now in China. Um, the reality of it, eighty percent or ninety percent of the panels that we get in the United States are made in China. And we basically buy what is available, a missing standard of the state.
Right, I I think there are Canadian panels available and my uh, solar array are Canadian panels.
Yeah, like for example, if I was doing like one project or a residential project. It's much easier, cheaper to go with Canadian or somebody more local. But when we're building a portfolio of like. We need some, a company that can.
Is that in that supply and price?
Yes, supply and price and everything. And they also work with you and the decommissioning. Um. What is the process? Where do you recycle? Where do you send that? Um, all that stuff.
Yeah. Are 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 all of your large arrays like this with uh, Chinese panels?
No, 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 no. Some of the price that we built them is.
Yeah.
I think for the purpose of this conversation, we can sort of broadly say that we'd be open to talking alternatives to that or looking at whatever might work and.
These panels are gonna be the rotating power of the sun.
Yeah, that's the. Things tracker.
Yeah, single axis tracker.
That's what we like to.
Yes, in that.
Yeah, so they sort of.
So what is your um, hazardous material history and and years that you've been working? Have you had any? Uh, issue, environmental issues or anything like that you've had to deal with?
No, no, there's nothing. And in the past, for some of the towns, we have, we can work with manufacturers submitting. Um, a non-toxic and safer environment, which you need to provide when you go to customs.
I think there was an existing reported spill that the DEC had on there and I looked it up and it was.
Yeah, I think.
Unknown and exposed, it was, they closed the.
Yeah, because we have, we also have an environmental assessment on the property.
Yeah.
And I noticed it was like something like. While I'm on this.
While ago and and they didn't even know what it was. It was just some report from someone.
Yeah, I I looked that up. I said that thing.
So do you have any other projects in New York that you're working, currently working on or proposing?
Yeah, we just approved two projects in Clay, which is an hour from here. We're breaking ground in January. Doing a start on the same proposal, breaking ground. Another one, what was, it stopped in New York. It's an hour south of Buffalo.
It's basically in Ohio.
Yeah. Um, another one in Evans. Uh, we have one in Camden, New York, and Vernon, close to you, the guy. Um.
We're finalizing approvals in Bolton.
Yeah, finance.
Our special use permit, but we're just finalizing the site plan.
Yeah.
How many do you have complete in that up and running?
No, we don't have any, oh, but ground mounts are happening up and running uh, in New York right now. We're breaking ground in portfolio in January.
But in Massachusetts, we have.
Oh, in Massachusetts, yeah, we have. Oh, we have about a hundred and fifty megawatt uh, up and running.
And what size is this one?
Five megawatts.
So you've got quite a few out there.
Yes, yeah, we've been in this for the same years.
When you said a hundred megawatts in New York, uh, it's under construction?
No, the hundred megawatts that we have in New York are basically permitted and we're ready to start construction in January.
But you did get the approvals from those towns from Clay?
Yeah, we on, we on the land, we're breaking ground.
Yeah.
Where, where in Clay?
Uh, Burke Blenke Road. Um, you know where the new micro facility is gonna go. There's a huge transmission line. Basically, two parcels next to the micro facility.
So, but ten years in business, you haven't decommissioned any of them yet?
No, we have another commission. Um, I believe that we submitted a draft version of the commission input that is based on the past. Uh, examples that we have getting up with more than projects, but we always leave it up to the town if you guys have a different version, any other way to estimate it.
There's a minor mistake in the uh, dollar value. It's nine ninety-nine and I think in the fair government, it's zero ninety-nine.
Oh, probably, so.
But I'd go to the engineer for that.
Yeah.
Look at my picture, I say the same thing.
These and buildings, what kind of uh, what are the objections you're running into?
The typical objection that we get is in upstream New York is, you know, uh, also they stop in the farmland. Um, it's disturbing the farmland, visibility of the neighbors. Tax agreements with the town. The commissioning plans, those are things that you usually see.
I know the tax agreements, are those all transparent with all the towns?
Yeah, with the other taxing jurisdiction. I know that uh, we have a person in my company, Matthew Longman. He might have been already working with you, the town attorney.
Yeah.
And I know that there was something going on with a previous solar company that the town wanted X amount. But it's it's standard where we're paying, I think, in clay. Um, so he's fine. We're familiar with pilot agreement, posting agreements, idea pilots.
Now, the lifespan you uh, talk about in here is twenty-five years. That's the expected lifespan of the panels?
Yeah, expect left now the panels, yeah.
Now, you 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 talk about dismantling it at that point, but would would you upgrade the panels if it was working?
Most likely no, because this project is. Assuming that it will be permitted and interconnected, it will be part of the NYSARDA program, the VITR program. That program is twenty to twenty-five years.
Okay, and that program ends?
Yeah, that program ends. So that's how long you send it for now.
Yeah.
And the decommissioning at that point, that if, okay, things all done and panels removed. Pull up your poles and so on, and your conduits and so on that's been laid underground, everything is pulled back up.
Yeah, every, 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 everything that was needed for the project.
Textile fabric you mentioned pulled out.
Everything, everything is pulled out, yeah. We do leave the beer cans that we find though.
Archaeological significantly.
And we made sure in the decommissioning plan that there's soil restoration according to the AG market standards.
Presuming then they're just saying they're gonna find the replacement of this electricity from another means, so they won't need this.
Wow, who knows? Anyway, thoughts.
Get us all.
Fusion, they just got fusion to work, so, you know. Twenty-five years from now, you know.
Talk a little bit about the the visual impacts, but.
Yes, so one of the reasons that we put it. The solar project in just location was. Because there's a very thick natural buffer of trees and building that we walk the property with, with Tampa. We're more than welcome to go back. When you stand right here, you can't see the road, you can't see the neighbors. Um, and there are some small openings in this area, and that's where we're proposing landscaping.
What about, where across valley looking back, knowing that's side hill?
Um, yes, same, this is a perspective. Yeah, so this is a visual, like so with the. Existing conditions.
There's two.
So the one on the silos from, are you?
I have to get that file on that computer.
Oh.
Like, this is not the computer that's actually.
Do we have a lot of people watching?
Um, there's five, ten people.
It's curious to, they could see this, it's probably not seeing that.
Yeah, if I had known ahead of time, I could have gotten that set up, but.
Okay.
Like smoothing.
Yes.
Anytime to.
They'll leave that here for you and.
I just downloaded it here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that house to the east, is that gonna be impacted? Further up on the hill? You can see the driveway.
Yeah, this actually, this is a little bit higher, but when you're standing right here and when you walk across the property, you can, you can see it.
So then that can be.
And just again, standing across it, where I reach out to these neighbors across the street, and we send them out letters, we give individuals. And we work with them if they want to start landscaping. And even though that we have got the other people that we need to get here. If it's not, you know, everything is done, we can always adjust it in reference with the neighbors or the plan.
Yeah, I think it's worth pointing out too, I I took a quick look at the master. Area where there's a scenic view, sure.
Right.
That's correct, yeah.
So how does the decommissioning get paid for? Is it paid for time in an escrow account or as a big jar?
Typically, and then with, yeah, there are very different ways. I mean. We are the ones that support the commission of the project. Um, now, in the scenario that, you know, we go belly up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a decommissioning bond that is estimated based on the town engineer. And there's a present value for what it will cost the decommissioned project right now. And then you inflate that value with inflation rate for twenty-five years. And then there's a bond before we put the building permit for the future value of the commission this solar project. What I've done in other towns is that there is a condition of the permit that every five years you get to review. That amount, just in case some things change. As you know, the decommissioning, and we, they were. From the projects, you know, two years ago, had to review it because the cost just increased.
Um, I've worked with towns where they have them put up actual cash. I know you didn't want to hear that one.
That is the best way. Bonds and security. Or that that's, that's the decision that lives with the town board.
Town board, an attorney will, I I'm fairly certain that's what you're gonna find.
We we just don't want to. What New York State did in the past. Uh, what New York State did in the past was they basically subsidized power producers in the beginning and allowed them to get inflated rates. And then basically the all the clear backup when they were, had to get lower rates than average wage, uh, uh, rates. And then basically the state got stuck with all of this.
Yeah. They learned, they learned quite a bit since.
Yes.
Believe.
Those are the cogeneration plants.
Yes.
It was not solar, that was.
No, but uh, the same thing. Make sure that there really has to be decommission, that the funds end up being there and then the taxpayer.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that one of the bigger issue that I'm sure from towns regarding the commission is not so much looking, you know. Twenty-five years, but a lot of these friends they get. So on transacting multiple times. So in case it's a, an issue with the project or it's abandoned. Then the neighbors are complaining, you're trying to reach out to the owner, where are they? They have to decommission this project, it's not properly working, it was never interconnected with national grid. That's usually the biggest issue that I've seen the decommission. So it's not so much in five years, it's what will happen in five years if this is.
This project, um, it would. What, go into the do-gooder road plant? Station or? But it's not a good community solar per se that people in Pompeii wouldn't pay and then have it go directly to them.
Correct.
Go into the grid system.
It goes into the grid and then we basically have to sell, find off acres and. I've worked with towns in the past, we've worked with um, schools, the IDA, but there is a threshold of the meter usage. That commuter solar program is just no longer there, even if we wanted to.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for.
Oh, yeah, no.
But, you know, if they think that.
No, 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 yeah.
It's gonna go directly into their account, their meters. It's not set up that way.
Well, it is worth noting that the electrons generated do flow into any home that's connected to that substation and feeder.
Correct.
Right, but there's no guarantee.
Is there?
Yes, so like.
Correct, yeah.
So.
But it's not being shipped off to Nevada or something like that. It's, it is local energy.
Yeah, and like the, like, yeah, like even though there's not like. An entrance in the front of the people, one of the like, the local benefit that we do with the Chris, like offset the usage. And like, like high peak times, you know, like in the winter where everyone had their, um, the heater going in the middle of the summer where everyone has the AC. Having a source of electricity right here is basically lowers, what are they, ground stones?
Now, now, how long have you guys been in business again?
We often jump back in two thousand seven.
So have you sold off any of your uh, arrays?
We have sold off first day in some of the smaller project because when we walk into financial, when we went to construction. The way that we finance the project, we bring a financial partner that takes a portion of the ownership.
Right.
We retain a small portion on it and we also retain the ownership because that's give us control on what happens with the project.
So, so when, like, if you sold this project up, you'd sell the land?
No, no.
You would just sell the power generating?
Yes, we own all the land of every project we've ever done. It's sort of like entity of the project.
Right.
Some players.
Right, you're just selling the.
But even.
What you're saying, when you do sell them, that you retain.
We always.
You retain uh.
Percentage.
Your ownership?
Uh, the own, the property itself, we retain it. If we bring a financial partner to take a portion of the project. We keep a small ownership that give us control on the.
I'm a power generating.
On the power generator, and. Technically, we give at least to the financial partner, so give us control on what happens with the first day. In case there's an issue with stormwater, they have to fix it. There's an issue with the condition of the project or any commitments that we made to the neighbors, they have to fix it. Similar to like a McDonald's situation. They can now not to pay the rent, but if the burgers are not centered.
On the, in the end, the nutshell is, okay, when it comes to decommission, if that happened, you guys are still there.
Yeah, we're still there.
That we, the owners, we're gonna know where to find you.
Yeah, in front of every single part that we have, we have the local information of the whoever's taking care of the professional maintenance. My contact information is the property owner and the contact information locally for the uh, if the project company also.
So again, that that maintenance, the cutting of the grass and. That's all.
Yeah, it's all local.
Right, you're not driving from.
No, 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 no. No, no, it's so, it's so local and now the the hydro city mix that we use, they call it solar. Mix, so it's a low bro.
Yeah.
Pass and very, very domain and, you know, it's a pickup truck a few times a year, mostly in this area for it's not removal.
Yeah.
So if we had a big storm and we lost some of the buffer and became visible, is that something you would restore?
Yeah, one of the things I've done in all the towns is that, they set the commission for the solar project, but there's also an escrow amount for landscaping. For maintenance and also replanting. Everything that we buy has a warranty, a one-year warranty in case that. Any of the trees die within one year, then this player to come and replace it. And of course, we have to follow the.
So like some of these hedgerows, they, I I I haven't seen it with my own eyes, but I can, I can imagine that they're inundated with vines. They're choking the trees out and then eventually they may.
You know, the ones that were planted?
Well, I don't know. No, it's not the extent in the net.
Oh, yeah, they said, yeah, they said naturally, just like any other property, we have an issue, something falls out, but we're planted.
Okay, so you maintain.
A lot of the things we require is they present an operation and maintenance plan.
Yeah.
Education, maintenance and guarantees how all the.
Which is what you plant plus what's.
Like, another thing that we have done in the past is that. We propose the trees that we have in the plan, but we also allocate what's called like the landscaping buffer, which is a little bit larger. And then after the project is built, if the town or the neighbor believes that more planting is to be impacted, then you can get located in that area.
So when this is built and I drive up or down Frank Long Road, there's a gate. When I look through that gate, what am I seeing? Will I see the?
Well, the access road takes a jog.
Okay, so I I can't see the.
And access roads turns ninety degrees. It's a temporary.
So the fact that you guys could hide this, is, was this a big question choosing the site or was it?
Yes. Now, now this. And you'd read.
Oh.
Through the lounge here. What's this planting? Yeah, so this is all.
This is a.
This is the, the trees allocated in, in Native American area that we're not disturbing.
Right.
So you have about, I think it's like.
I'm not, I drive by Frank Long Road, I don't see. I just see the road.
Yeah.
The driveway. To a reasonable degree, yes. If you stand there and you want to see it, you're gonna find a way to see it.
I wanna see it. Look at mine every day.
Right.
What's average?
Yeah.
On that hill.
It's on any of the slopes in.
We don't have those. On there.
Our rate, I don't know if the average is overall, but it ranges from three to fifteen. If we don't build over fifteen.
Yeah, UK doesn't work for you because, you know, sun.
Batteries on there?
No.
No batteries on, no onsite batteries.
Just the uh, uh, inverters.
Yep, inverter. Then for when you do the information.
So there'll be a building there for the inverters or the inverters are outside?
No, we actually have a string.
Yeah, so they're.
Inverters, so they're gonna be basically. Look at it right here.
There, yeah.
Every, yeah, so this is a table with eleven panels. Eleven of these tables create a string.
Yes.
Each of them have a string, but it just, they've been, yeah, that's in there.
So, micro inverters?
They're like string inverters.
How, how work do they physically?
Like this.
Yeah.
When you instruct that, because there would be tree removal and something and all that. Um, how much of the site do you do it at once?
We have, we have to come in and do it at once. We find that there is a little bit, uh, it's quicker. And the way that we stabilize. And the way that we stabilize the site that. Within the grinding on the side and then we spread out the chips to can probably stabilize the property. And then we come into the hydro city, so that way we minimize the amount of pressure.
What's the predominance of trees that are present on that, you know?
Like the type?
Yeah.
I, I don't know from the top of my head, but can.
I, I don't know the type like Pedro said, but they're non-mature, a lot of brush, I think mixed brush, that sort of thing.
Okay.
I think.
As opposed to a lot of the more.
Yeah, I think.
Type of trees, um. Those mainly just grow in. Young trees. Nothing that. Done there that I would say over thirty years.
Oh, I can tell you that there are. In one section, there's some maples and there's some cherries. A lot of buckthorns moved in, so you know, we've been dealing with that. One section. Coming from Frank Long Road, we've got Frank Mighty starting to move in, so I'm happy with the pollinators, um. Dan, uh, Winter has, I don't know how many hides. He's got a bunch of hides. Yeah, and, you know, to be able to have pollinators there as well.
Is he a neighbor?
No, he's a.
He's a beekeeper.
Yeah.
Yes.
The key was we did not want farmland disturbed, there's one small portion of, um. I think Dan Diamond had, um. What do you get, corn?
There's corn on this, this.
Yeah, so he's ready to rotate, um, yeah.
It's, it's.
That one little section. Are, are you the owners of the?
Yes.
Yes, what's your name? I'm Anita Schmidt. And this is George, thank you.
How do you spell your guys' last name?
K Y A N K A.
Been pretty quiet, Tom, here, you gotta have some kind of.
I was wondering, uh, uh, we ran into this once in your work.
We don't.
And all the, uh. Things they were pretty clear on was they wanted to be adjacent to a three-phase line that they could tie into. Are you in that position there?
Right, that part of what drew us to the, the property itself.
Oh, okay.
Three phases go down Frank Long Road.
Cause all the way to Frank running, it takes north of.
Yeah, I'm surprised I didn't realize that.
Is there a particular season when you do the majority of your construction?
No, it really depends on the projects are permanent, so we tackle the construction by portfolios. Um, set a project, so like right now, we're gonna start the construction of this portfolio. It's when the wind.
But, I mean, of course, that being said, if there's a few snow on the ground.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I just from, uh, the standpoint that I know some. Times encourage construction during the winter when you've got an issue with, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, so, so for properties that we're dealing with in, eh, with it, with the bad, which is stuck on and. Yeah, there's a clearing restriction, so for example, if we miss that window, which is March thirty first, we just have to wait until November.
So are there any, um, supply issues or anything like that that would cause this project to potentially not happen according to plan? Or might cause you to abandon it?
I don't think so, because of where we are right now with the project, like I said, we're only waiting on the sun impairment, everything else is done. Uh, one of the reasons that we've secured the technical agreement and paid the twenty five percent is to secure the cost. And which allows to bring that contract to our supplier and work nobody portfolio and make sure that we secure this, hopefully sometime. By the end of twenty twenty three.
And as we've been specing these out, our previous projects with other towns and going through the engineering and sourcing of all the products. Or, equipment rather, um, we have not run into any sort of supply chain issues, I think a lot of that is. Behind us thankfully at this point in history, so I think it's really on running up at this point.
So are there any stormwater requirements for projects like this?
I need in the back here, uh, John can answer that too, and yes, um, but specifically with, uh. There, there was a, a ordinance that came out in twenty eighteen, uh, specifically for, I'm sorry about my voice, by the way. Um, specifically for solar projects, um. Dealing with what is considered pervious versus impervious. Um, and it has been decided that solar arrays panels such as these. Uh, are not considered pervious because the ground underneath them depend, depends on how they're installed, but with these being, uh, driven piles. For the foundation, um, there is really no impact to the ground around it. Uh, so it's considered to be a pervious area because it's water runs off of these, these things as they, they tilt. Uh, so water runs off and continues in the same manner that it would have if it were just falling on the ground.
And the road, the access road is a pervious material as well?
Correct, and that is also, uh, uh, New York State D E C detail. That would be used for construction for that.
So you're not doing any site work in terms of regrading?
Correct.
It's just taking the brush out in the trees, but you're not bringing bulldozers in and regrading it all.
Do you take the stumps out roots or do you leave those there?
We grind everything.
They grind it on site. Well, I mean, the.
Yeah, so we take out these stumps within the panel area because we can't have that, but in the clearing areas, for example, between. The panel and the tree line, we leave these stumps. So every, when you look at the site line, everything outside fence area, that's the chair and limit, we leave the stumps.
So anything within the actual panel area, they take the roots to?
Grind them.
They just grind them and place that.
So the root space stays, the stomps go.
Yeah, we take out these stones and grind them.
How do you ensure that you have access around the entire? Site for maintenance?
There's, uh, there's new rivers where I look at it right here.
But not around the other side, it just goes.
Yeah, so basically those days, and if you need to access this panel, you basically do this.
It's designed in such a way where you could, it's, there's mobility allowed around the, already around the design, so.
And I think that we, like you said, that we did already, um, I just not sure we could finish, not here, we're getting any comments that we submit now.
It's not a lot of maintenance though, once you.
No, no.
And.
No, but one of the, eh, is that we did, so we submitted the plans to the fire department to make sure that you had any comments. Because I've seen in the past that even though that for maintenance, we don't need that higher, sometimes the time the fire department wants to make sure that. It can come in and do.
Did they look at it? Yes.
You know.
Well, we're, I, I'm sorry, so I don't know, I mean, I know Renee's here and. They, you know, we're basically, remember this is a multi-step process, so the first thing is. They, the town board's looking for a recommendation from this board about whether this is a good place for solar, then they're gonna go through this whole. Um, dog and pony show over at the town board, who will then put in the overlay. Then it comes back to us, so, um, I don't know, Renee, if you have a timing, you know. Issue or what you're thinking at town board or just.
I let the process dictate the, um. The timing, I mean, it is, it takes the time that we needed to take, so I'm not. I'm not trying to stall it out, I'm not trying to delay, but I'm also not trying to.
Feeling right now is that. We've heard and, you know, if you have anything else to give us tonight, you know, we can keep coming up with questions, but I. What I think is that. We need to take what you've given us and also take our binders and. For the sixteenth, really sit down and go through and. Pull out your solar tier three manual and the local law and go through. And answer the questions and does this meet the spirit of the local law or does it not? And come back with your reasons, yes or no, or new questions to answer before we say. That's my feeling.
And I also nail jumped in with their thoughts.
Well, I, I appreciate the completeness of the application, um. What was given us in terms of matching that up with our tier three. Requirements and I, I looked at both of them and, uh, I think they looked closely at the tier three requirements also. And whoever, because they pretty much answered the question specifically that we pose in the tier three. Uh, requirements, I mean, they pretty much followed it line by line. Um, in terms of percentage of the property that's allowable to be used and, and, um. You know, all of the other things we ask, uh, the presentation to. Get an overlay, so I think they did a pretty thorough job, I appreciate that. Um, so early on in the process, they gave us all the information needed.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot there, but again, I think Kurt was coming on that.
A lot to chew on and I just, I would think that if. About a month, right till our next meeting, and if anyone has, you know, like well in advance of the meeting, if there's gonna be some specific. Issues that people want to address, that would be good if it, if like Kevin, and after he reviews it again thoroughly. You think that it's meets the criterion, you could be ready for a recommendation at the next meeting.
No.
Potentially, right, I don't want to, again, like.
Well, pro- process is interesting too, is, can you envision us doing something like we do for Seeker for something like this? You know, where we have certain items, we're gonna check them off, we can discuss and support, like at a meeting that criteria.
Yeah, I mean, we do have the, the criterion of the, uh, the tier three solar. And you may recall that the project that did not go as well, we did go through, we went through it, we discussed it, answered it.
Spend any time on it all, yeah, it's covered, if that's done, it's an issue. There's a sticking point somewhere, then that's something we can just have an open discussion about.
Yeah, but they, they, they pretty much followed our.
It's like that, it's.
Yeah, basically that where I'm coming from is I know that s- some of us have had the binders longer.
Oh, absolutely.
So to get that, absolutely. Fair chance, but it's, there's a lot here and it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's very complete and it's a credit to you guys.
It would be nice to be able to get some answers before the sixteenth from them, so can we get there, how do we do that?
I think probably the best thing to do is, um. You want to be careful, you don't want to do a reply all, I've said this before, um, because if we started having a lot of discussion on it now, you don't want it to. Assume to be a public.
Yes.
Right, so if you have questions that you want funneled, I, I would recommend. That they be sent to an email to Sue.
Yep.
Myself and John.
And you might be able to answer them or you can ask them.
Well, and then we'll funnel them or, you know, ask them.
This will also give them time to go look for some locally made solar panels.
Correct. But also just give them a chance to answer, like if, you know, on January sixteen, sixteen, yeah, on the fifteenth, if everybody starts sending stuff to us.
You know, maybe, which I'll. Right in this, that the sixteenth is Martin Luther King Day, but traditionally we have met on that.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was just gonna say. I mean, just to clarify, but I think you have mentioned the seeker, um.
We're not gonna do it now.
Okay, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure. Yeah, that's the process that we. And then, yeah, are these, eh, what they brought in.
Yeah, that's seeker would be town board.
Perfect, that's what I thought. And then for the purpose of, you know, the process, is there like an official acceptance of the application?
Today is for us to recommend to the town board. Um, whether or not we feel this meets the requirements of tier three. They, they give you the, if they give you the overlay, then you come back to us.
And we ask you the same questions we asked you tonight.
No, no, because in the past, usually, you know, Tom says, okay, application complete, you know, now we start the process, wanting to make sure that there's something like that here.
Well, if this gets approved, you're gonna be our first.
Well, but on, on that question though, on that question, when I looked at this application, I would. Find it difficult to say that this application is not complete, and it is complete, they've paid the fees and. Yeah, so you're, I mean, your application. For this purpose, your application is definitely complete, yeah, there's nothing, we, we might have some questions, but there's nothing you haven't given us that we need. Yeah, except the address of the local.
Like some artisanal ones, man, in a, a barn would be perfect.
After the wedding.
I've got a few questions that I would like to throw out to you. We were talking about the access road before and fire, um. If I remember correctly, doesn't the code require, uh, turn around every five hundred feet for fireworks?
For an access road, there is a footage. It might be five hundred feet.
We have them there.
It's gonna look to me like you had them every five hundred feet.
Yeah.
So Bill can address that. That's, that's why it's, that's why it's where it's located, um. We follow the fire code, make sure that we have them, it's actually not that, that long of a road. Um, so what you're seeing at scale here may look like it's, it's not, but, uh, we made sure that we have our, our turnaround and it's, it's not. It's actually a T, um, which is also allowed by fire code, um. But at this point, this is why we sent it to the, the, uh, local fire official, is to get their, their acceptance on that as well.
All right, well, I mean, I'm just going by your scale, one inch is a hundred feet. So it looks like there's a longer distance than five hundred feet between those.
We, we, we'll, we'll take that.
Um, this is, as everybody knows, this is a process, if, if this is an example or maybe something else based on another question from the board. We can continually look and, uh, uh, address the plans and redesign them for subsequent meetings and making sure that, you know, we. Are, are meeting the satisfaction of everybody.
The other question I had was, um, on your setbacks, it looks like you're going to the fence line or to the solar array rather than to the fence line.
Um, we actually have both, uh, depending on where you're looking. We did it from the fence line and the array, just so that you had both that. So like right there is to the fence line up there, fence line on this side, I mean, we made sure that we had a, uh, dimension to the fence line on each of our. Our closest ones.
Right, and I'm not talking about dimension, but talking about the required setbacks. Um, it looks like you're, you're considering those to the array and, um.
Right, because they're building setbacks, usually a fence wouldn't.
Yeah. I realize that, I just, um. And I guess that would be the assumption, um. In my mind, I personally, I'd like to see the setback to the fence, but. Um, that's just, that's just me. But I know where you're coming from, a normal setback, it's the, to the building, it's not, you can have a fence on the property and that's.
Right.
This is a little bit different, I think, though.
The different, different type of project than.
Yeah.
Much green spaces, you can, with vacation, so I would say, you know, for my taste, let's stick with.
Jamie or John, is there a? Legal interpretation on that?
We allow fences to be put on property lines at one foot off of a property line, it's not considered a structure that means a setback.
Yeah. And I, I don't see it making any difference on green space at all, I just can't see. Well, if you were to use it. Are you just saying that it's gonna be a measurement then, on this fence?
Well, the, the measurement to the fence.
What, what does that gain you?
What's that?
What, what do you, what does that gain us?
Well, it gains you more setback.
Or the property lines.
Right.
Basically, that would be encroaching on the space, the usable space for the array.
Right, right.
What are you saying?
I mean, in most cases, I think you need it anyway, I just noticed up at the.
Yeah, we're off by fifteen.
Fifteen feet.
Yeah, we're eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six feet. North side.
Right. The only other thing I spotted too was down. On the, uh, west side here, it looks like you're getting very close to those wetlands. And you have to have a hundred foot buffer per state.
If they're D E C wetlands. But they're, they're federal wetlands, federal wetlands, try to have a buffer on them.
Right.
We still make sure that.
We still make sure that, I mean, because we're staying so close to existing grade here, I mean, we're not doing gray sheet out here. So we're not, like, we don't have to worry about, in this case, grading spilling into wetlands or us causing an impact to them. Uh, while still being. Close to them. We we kept our distance from them as best we could. As much as practical for the project.
Back to fire, is there a requirement for the percent of grade on that road for the fire?
Yes, uh, ten percent, I believe.
Okay.
So just so the board knows, I will go through a thorough engineering review of every detail, but I'm list started already. But it's not appropriate at this time. You guys have to make a decision whether this is appropriate.
Right.
But a lot of the questions you're asking, I will be.
Answering.
Died in in detail.
Yeah.
Share that list. So.
Yeah. Board have any other?
There's a couple of questions online, I don't know.
It's Jamie, because we're not a public hearing, but there's a couple of questions on.
It's up to you.
Here, to the chair.
We'll hear them. Um. Philip Boff on Facebook, where will the solar array be located? I think he's just looking for a specific.
Oh, that's the.
It said seven thousand Frank Long Road.
And who owns it?
Uh. Let's see what's.
Right now, I own it.
Right now, they're enjoying it. I mean, I said that on Seaboard.
Um, is this a public, private, or a combination of the two?
Company? I guess.
Projects.
Projects.
Yeah, we're. Private, not public, a land there's my advantage.
And then a question from Zoom, is the land being leased?
No, we're purchasing it.
Purchasing it.
Answer to that would be Seaboard would be purchasing it if everything is approved.
All right.
I I think public for look those questions. Um. I guess, as I said, the board members to take what knowledge we have, what's in front of you, what's represented. And we do our local law. And if you have questions, um. Email, submit email form to me, Jamie and John. So that if you can point name, forwarding the Seaboard to try to get those answers. Uh, so we have the best for our next meeting. This, you will be on our agenda for the January sixteenth, twenty twenty three meeting. Any other questions from our board? Just right there, then. For our secretary, one at a time slowly, make your. Position.
Bill Interline, A N T E R L I N E, rental companies.
W B E N.
What else?
Okay.
Uh, Mike Chandler, project manager, Seaboard Solar.
Okay.
It says. And we're good.
Perfect. What with you?
Sure. Yeah. Have to spell the same thing.
Ryan.
Ryan?
Ryan, R Y A.
Yeah.
Try to get here early next time.
Okay.
Hopefully Bennett's okay, he would.
Yeah, his son, he just run with a car, he's on the way here and I was delivering the clay projects.
Okay, so.
Yeah, next time I'll be here.
Will we save you or not?
We'll save us.
I will, I'll be here the next one. I'll be here.
Okay.
Thanks, you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll be here, I'll be here.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. Drive safe. Happy holidays.
Yeah.
Um. I got one more, uh, just announcement, whatever, that put on your calendars, March ninth, twenty. These the county signing. Like the whole day, you can get a breakfast and a lunch. Your train starts.
Breakfast from lousy.
Well, do we get a certain table to?
Yes.
Oh, no, you want to sit with me again?
I want to sit with Sue. You'll be at the end of the table.
Yeah.
More twin?
Round table.
March nine. Uh, hi.